Getting a dollar amount is sufficient.
Make a motion to approve.
Bobby, what do they have to left? What's?
Holding on to let that see amount for cleaning the drains and different things like that.
Okay, so that's basically.
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay. A second.
And all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Two requests for the release of surety. It's Victoria Wood, section one, phase one, and Victoria Wood, section one, phase two. We were holding one hundred ninety-four thousand five fifteen and twenty cents on one section and thirty-five thousand eight sixteen on the other. And they have sent the letter from their attorney and stating that they are now their own town with their own planning commission and will take over managing the town.
So are these the only two things that they have that we'll have to release? Or is there more to come?
That's it. This is it.
So Andrew, can we release both these or we need to do them in separate motions?
Both phases can be done at once.
And you're good with this too?
Yeah, we're also going to have a bridge maintenance agreement come before us at some point in time from the town. There I've been in conversation with their attorney younger in regards to the covered portion and then the remainder because we do have a huge bridge fund.
Right.
So we are still responsible for maintenance of the actual superstructure of the bridge.
Yeah. And they'll always have, they'll always be responsible for.
They'll be responsible for all the aesthetic work and the wooden cover.
You okay with the contract, Andrew? That their attorney wrote?
The contract for the bridge maintenance?
Well, for.
That's still in the process.
No, I'm talking about the release of basically their own township. And we're releasing everything.
I don't think I've seen that contract.
It's not a contract. That's already happened.
But we're just.
I know we've done that before.
Release of surety here, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
But the letter that they said.
Yeah, there is. Their attorney younger sent a letter just kind of spelling out that they've created their own town, their own planning commission, BZA. They have all their own ordinances.
So it's all good.
I don't think I've seen that letter, but that is true. Yes.
Yeah.
So we're good with the release of this then?
Bigly yes. Yeah.
Good. Okay. All right, I make a motion to release surety for Victoria Wood, section one, phase one, Victoria Wood, section one, phase two.
And now second.
All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Our last item is a request to rezone. It's PCR twenty-four oh five petition owners Woodbridge Capital Management LLC by Roger Lamping, manager. It's to rezone one point six zero nine acres located on the south side of Lincoln Avenue, a hundred feet west of the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Lynn Road from A agricultural to C three highway commercial. Ohio Township twenty-six, six and nine is advertised in the standard May thirtieth of twenty-four and the area plan commission gave no recommendation at their June tenth twenty-four meeting.
So what does that mean, Molly? No recommendation? What was that discussion? I'm sure you have it here.
Well, it means they couldn't decide whether it should be approved or not, or at least they couldn't agree. And so they decided to just let it move forward with the non-recommendation. So it'd be completely in your hands.
I missed that meeting.
Molly, well, what was the four zero vote after June tenth meeting on this?
Four zero was to give no, to keep it moving with no recommendation.
Oh, that was, that was a.
They had to have a unanimous vote one way or the other.
One way or the other.
Yes.
Okay.
And we only had four members attend that meeting.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, yes.
Go ahead, gentlemen.
Howdy, my name is Aaron Miller. I'm representing Woodbridge. And I kind of wanted to do a base, basic preview of the issues that were brought to our attention regarding turning this from agriculture into a commercial property. We did have three members that were voting to move forward. We had one that did not approve to move forward. He said he felt it was spot zoning and the attorney there didn't feel that that was true, but the member had their vote. But I do want to give a couple ideas of what we are talking about. We're talking about building a commercial structure for a auto mechanic repair. It will have a residence attached to it. The owner that will be working on the cars will actually be living in the residence attached to the building. There were six items that were brought up from the administrators, the first one being commercial creepers, spot zoning. Literally in the area, there is double D's auto body, NAP's auto, which is A plus auto and tire, Newburg Collision Center, CRM Restoration Management, Woodfree's Pet Resort Snyder's Auto Body, and Morgan Distributing within a stone's throw away. The other issue that was brought up was a traffic issue and Bobby had gone through the county engineer and said everything that we were doing was, would be reasonable in our site review. We did locate a drive entrance, which would have been west of the west part of the property on Lincoln Avenue. And that there was nothing that we felt that was going to be a traffic issue. Their other issue was wildlife. Well, this is not a wildlife preserve. It is owned agricultural, but it is not considered a wildlife preserve. All trees in any instance, the owner is going to be removing all the trees in, in any instance for any future build, whether that be commercial or residential. Also, the homeowners, if they feel like wildlife is an issue, they are more than welcome to plant trees onto their property if they want to preserve that area. The drainage was also brought up. Item number four, homeowners stated that drainage could be a major problem for them. This property is not a drainage retention basin. It is a property that is going to be built on. Homeowners' properties that drain or already existing that is draining into this property will have to be addressed to the nearest ditch. And the second item for that is all new drainage. All new drainage for a commercial property have to be approved by the county engineer anyways. So that, that should be addressed through the county engineer's office. If there were to be a commercial approval on this in a building, we would have to present that for drainage approval. Noise. We have prepared a use and development, which would address the hours of operation from seven AM to seven PM. And like I said, there are multiple auto body repair and auto mechanic shops in the vicinity. And also property values. This will be a brand new construction. Everything that we've been doing in the past is usually a high end. It will be an attractive building. So I do believe we will not have declining property values due to a brand new building in this vicinity. Is that all?
So.
Scott, anything to add?
Scott Beadle with Cash Wagner and Associates. After the meeting last month, Aaron approached me and, you know, gave me some of the comments that came up during the meeting, some of the concerns. So we did discuss a use and development commitment and tried to put something together. We did reach out to area plan commission, and I think the process is basically just to bring it before you to vet that out and make sure that everybody would be agreeable to what we're presenting. So I do have multiple copies of it to kind of take a look at. And I think everything's pretty well on page two that's, that would limit the use of the property. From the standpoint of the uses, there are a number of uses that are allowable in straight C three zoning. So we went through the, we went through the code and looked at all the items and uses that could be available to that and struck quite a few of them to come up with the list that we have. The one thing that kind of sticks out is the automotive aspect of some of these items, but that is what, that's what's being proposed is a auto repair shop. So I think there were some other items in there from the standpoint of body shops and so forth. There wouldn't be any body shop work, but it would basically be auto repair. And there's a couple of other things in there that we didn't want to totally limit ourselves. So like auto detailing and there's a few things that are, that might be repetitive in that list that if everybody was agreeable to the list, then we're good with it. But if not, we might be able to condense or modify some of those statements. And then the last statement. We, we basically just be, we want to be able to have a residence attached to the commercial building. That was the whole point of the project to begin with. So whether that's stated correctly or not in, in O, that's something that you guys can have input on, or Molly can let us know how that needs to be stated exactly. And then moving on to number two. The, the south side of the property, mainly because the residence on the commercial building would be on the south side of the commercial building. It would basically be his front yard to a certain extent. So he didn't want to be pushed right up against the property line. The setbacks for C three are five foot on all sides, but we're hoping to keep a twenty-five foot setback off of that, just so he's got somewhat of a front yard. And then any other building that might show up would be, would also stay off twenty-five feet to give the south the jointer some space. Exterior lighting is a, a pretty common request that we get a lot of times. So basically the downward pointing, pointed lighting. And then like Aaron said, hours of operation would be seven AM to seven PM and limit that.
Scott, on the setback, would, so would you just say you adhere to residential setbacks? Which is twenty-five, twenty-five per year?
I don't know if we want the twenty-five front. I'm not sure, like getting up to Lincoln Avenue, if that would, if that would limit some of the use on the property. It's not a very deep property to begin with. So for, from a commercial standpoint, so trying to get parking spaces in a parking lot or something north of a building or, or vice versa. If you put the building right up on Lincoln Avenue and have a parking lot south, I would, I would almost have to see what, how a site plan would lay out if that would be detrimental to the property or not, to lose that additional twenty, twenty feet of space.
That it? Somebody here to speak against the project? Yes, sir.
Chad Bruce, I'm a resident of the area, also on behalf of the residents who couldn't be here this evening. I know there are quite a few still here though. So I'll start off by saying that I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you guys. I know you guys are the, the grassroots government here in Warwick County and, and you guys are here to make sure that the right thing is done for the residents and businesses of the county. And that's, that's what we want as well. I would assume that this falls under the guidelines that the state sets out for zoning of different commercial properties, residential properties. And so, you know, I'd like to remind you guys that you have to give reasonable regard to the current condition and character of the current structures and uses in the area, the most desirable use for the land, the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction and the responsible, with that word underlying, development and growth. The purpose of a zoning ordinance, as you guys know, is to secure adequate light, air, convenience of access, safety from flood, fire, and other damage, promote the public health, safety, comfort, morals, convenience, and general welfare of the area in question. There are some inconsistencies in the petition, in the petitioner's plea to the area plan commission during that meeting. I'll address those shortly. But it should be no surprise to the petitioners that the lot was a residential slash agriculturally zoned property and has uses as such. Their haste in purchasing the property does not mean that it was, that it needs to be zoned to fit their purposes. They knew what it was when they bought it. It's not like we're trying to tell them they can't put an auto shop on a commercial property. It's not a commercial property. So we don't feel that that constitutes a valid reason for rezoning. Their urging of the APC to spot zone the property, which is squarely located within a residential area. You know, spot zoning, which, you know, is not illegal, but it's really only acceptable if it bears a rational relation to the public health, safety, morals, convenience, or general welfare. This does not. In fact, we feel that it fits the definition of prohibited spot zoning completely, which is quote, "the singling out of a property for different treatment than similar surrounding land that is indistinguishable in character for the economic benefit of the land singled out." So I want to.
Say that again now. Repeat that again.
Okay, so prohibited spot zoning activity would be quote, "the singling out of a property", which is what we're doing here. For different treatment than similar surrounding land, of which that land is indistinguishable in character for the economic benefit of the land singled out, the owner of the land singled out, which is what we feel is happening here. You know, if you look at photos from the ground of the area in question, this is not a commercial area. These are homes. These are neighbors. The, the intersection of the road, this, this is the, this is the property right here, right next to a house. There's a house next to horses. There's houses behind it. You know, looking down from Lincoln, they say, you know, we're a stone's throw from other commercial properties. That's, that's true. They're along the highway. There's a house in between. The argument that was made to the area plan commission was that the property diagonal to the location is commercial. So if you're looking at a map, the intersection, intersection of Lynn and Lincoln, the northeast corner is zone commercial. However, that is owned by Sigico is the owner of record, as it's a gas and utility, underground gas pipeline. There's a junction box there. So no commercial structures or businesses will ever be built on that corner piece of property there. So if the argument to rezone it based upon that being commercial is acceptable, then I believe that's a slippery slope that you're going to get into because utilities own commercially zoned areas within numerous residential neighborhoods for that purpose. If we say that a utilities, commercially zoned lot is adequate reasoning, then there could be arguments made that in a residential area, you could put a commercial zoning there because there's a utility. And actually, on that same corner lot, there's actually trees that have been planted there. They're very young. But that, that corner lot in question, there are actually trees that have been planted, I don't know, two dozen of them. They're real small now. But that will actually further separate that commercial area against the highway from all of this residential area. So it is completely rezoning. That would be completely out of character for that neighborhood. Some of the other inconsistencies that were noted during the APC hearing. I believe it was Roger Lamping that was here. I know he's the guy who's in charge of, of that investment group. I believe he would have, if, if this would have been a court proceeding, he would have perjured himself on the stand. Now, he presented the building plans initially during the APC meeting, and the minutes will reflect it, as quote, "basically just a large two car garage at a house, just a place for Mr. Green to tinker with cars. He wants to downsize his operation and also do some woodworking on the side." That sounds great. Build a house in a little, you know. It was later pressed from him that it might be as large as thirty-five hundred square feet, just the shop area. That's almost eight times the size of a two car garage. But it gets better. It was later determined that it would be this building, along with a home with a twenty-five hundred square foot first floor footprint, an additional two and a half car garage. But this also turns out not to be true. Around seven AM on July fourth, Pat Green, who's the, working with Mr. Lamping in this, it's his business that they're going to be building, stopped by my house. He did a great job of finding me on Facebook and turns out my wife's family, my family have known his parents and family for a long time. My parents were customers of his. My son was in marching band at Boonville High School with his son. So this is not a personal thing by any means. I think Mr. Green's a great guy. But Mr. Green shared during his visit with me that not only was the incorrect information presented, but their plans are a little bit more invasive than I think anybody thought. When I brought up the thirty-five hundred square foot building, he said, oh, no, no, right now we're talking about a one hundred by fifty building. And I pressed a little bit further and I was told that Roger also quote, "wants a place to store some of his equipment", whatever that means. And he was, I was told that they were going to build an additional garage onto the side of this one hundred by fifty building. So with that, we're also looking at the house, the other two and a half car garage. This is not somebody building because he wants to downsize or he wants to tinker around. This is a huge business compound being planned for that lot. And I feel that just due to that patently false information, the vote probably would have been different. I think there would have been more than one dissenting vote at that, at that meeting. So to give you some scale, the fifty by hundred building alone is six times larger than my house, not counting the garage storage, the home, the additional two and a half car garage, not in keeping with the aesthetic. And we were also told that maybe one or two cars he would be working on may be parked outside. And we've, we decided to take a look at the current shop that, that Mr. Green uses because he actually has a auto shop across the highway. He actually already has a building that's actually smaller than what he's planning on building. So downsizing to a larger building. But on numerous occasions over the past month, I've driven past there and it's been stacked and racked with cars, haphazardly parked all over the place. So we're not talking about one or two cars sitting out there like they told us to try to appease us. It's multiple cars all the time parked outside. The building itself, we can see that maintenance isn't done on it. There's weeds growing up around the building. It's, it's in disrepair. I don't see how we could expect any different from a different place, one that's larger for him to try to take care of. I'll close by saying that the area in question does have drainage issues. We know that it is not the responsibility of that land to take runoff from other properties. However, it is not, also not our problem to take runoff from one point six acres of concrete parking lot. There's a small ditch creek that runs to the south of that property, runs through our backyard and a bunch of other ones that does occasionally get high and does occasionally flood. And we feel like taking the natural ground away and putting in that size of a building and that size of a parking lot is going to cause additional strain on that and cause water damage for us. With the information that was presented on record to the APC, the fact that the property was purchased with the knowledge of the current zoning, along with the planned construction being out of line with the neighborhood, topped off with the fact that this is clear, clearly an attempt to spot zone ineligible properties. We feel like the only thing that the commissioners can do on this is to vote no. Appreciate your time.
Sir, could you state for the record your address?
Four, five, nine, nine, Lynn Road.
Anyone else?
Hello, afternoon. My name's Laura Markowitz. I do live on Lynn Road, so I'll be across the street from where this is being built.
Could you state your mailing address for the record?
Let's see. Four, five, eight, eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Just pretty much everything Chad said, he hit it all, what I was going to say. The one question I do have, in the last meeting, we spoke about conditions or the, the panel itself spoke about traditions. If this man or company built this house and garage on that property, what if within a year, two years, he decides to sell that property? And what we have been informed, and it was alluded to, that a gas station would be coming in there or could be coming in there. So that was one of the things they discussed that they could not agree on was because they said, you know, some said, well, we can't limit that. We can or can, yeah, I'm, excuse my language. I'm a bit nervous here. But that is one of our questions is can that be limited on what can be built? And if he sells, what can and cannot go in there?
That's. Right here, right?
Based on the zoning.
Yep.
So that's one of the first things that their engineer had given the commissioners. It's a use and development commitment, and it does limit the use to just only what's on this list.
Okay, I apologize.
That's fine. It runs with the land.
Okay.
Have you seen this list, ma'am?
I believe, was that the list? I have not, sir. Thank you. I might ask also, he's talking about buildings that might crop up or might show up in his future. I'm assuming that goes off this too. What can and cannot be added would be in this list here also. And the other question we would have is signage. How big of a sign is, I'm assuming it's a limited sign they're allowed to put up by the city coordinates? And would it be lighted? You know, talking about lighting, is that going to be like a beacon in the sky?
So we do have requirements in the ordinance for a sign. It's not limited with their use and development commitment, but it's maybe something they could add, something that could be added if commissioners choose to do that. They can light a sign, but they couldn't do was have like a message board or anything.
Okay.
They could apply to do that, but it would go to a different board and there would be notices and more, another meeting.
Okay. And I apologize for not being more intelligent on this. We just recently purchased our home there. We've been there since December. And all of this is new to me. I've never dealt with any of this. So it's kind of a shock to begin with.
Yeah, it's new to everybody.
Yeah, and you don't know what to ask and what not to ask. Thank you. I think that would be the only two things. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Excluded.
No. It's limited to.
This is what they can have on that property.
Nothing else.
Automobile service station excluding facility. It's still a gas station. I wouldn't think that's a.
I think the legal definition is you could serve.
Services, awful services, gasoline. Clarify that.
So are you saying B and L are basically the same thing?
I, no, I was comment, looking at the lists of uses and B, A, B, and C, all talk about automobile shops, repair. L is more broad. It's automobile service station, which is really what we used to call gas stations. Which is really what we used to call gas stations, service stations.
Gas station.
So that, that in terms of concern for a gas station, this limited.
Do you think that means gas stations, Molly?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
That's pretty. I'd argue that all day.
This was certified on June tenth, which gives commissioners till September sixteenth. To make, to make a determination. That's ninety days. We do have a meeting a week prior to that for the commissioners. There's other options. It's a reconsideration if there's new evidence presented to send it back to the area plan commission for further consideration with the same application if there's further evidence that's been presented.
Which is this?
Yeah.
That's, this whole thing is further evidence because the APC board didn't have this.
We did not have that.
So your options today would be to table this, vote in favor, vote in deny, or vote to send it back to APC to review this new use and development commitment and see if then the APC would provide a recommendation based on this.
My real, I got two comments. One is it's not often we get rezones. We really don't get too many rezones that have, have only four of the seven members there.
Right.
And then the four members that were there. They said you decide.
Yeah, they could not.
This is our first.
Yes.
Well, I, to Terry's point, you know, it looks like there's more information. I got, you know, I'm a little bit, I got concerned about some wording in here. I don't like the fact that there was only four members at APC. That's what we rely on. That's what I've relied on as commissioners for seven and a half years as APC. We've typically taken, or I've typically taken their recommendation. That's what the board's for. That's what their expertise is in. Bob, you're on that board and so.
I, I think, my personal opinion.
My opinion.
I would send it back.
My opinion is send it back.
And I can.
Let them absorb this new information.
Explain some of this to them, what we're seeing today.
Well, they'll get, they'll get this right, Molly.
Right.
They'll get a shoot.
Yes.
But, you know, we can argue it a little bit more intelligently that way.
One sec. I'll let you get my appearance in a second. I, I think our request would be, and if I'm allowed to request this, I don't even know.
Sure you are. You're president.
Discussion has been not necessarily real solid on what building's going to go there. So these guys have said one thing. This gentleman said something differently. You know, I don't know what comes first, the chicken or the egg, but I'd like to see a little bit more defined plan on what it, what it is we're actually building.
Can definitely request that. I'm not sure that they had their plans exactly firmed up at the time when we met about it. And that was before they filed the rezone is when we kind of looked at a preliminary.
Understood. Sir?
You're going to speak up, sir?
Chris Tucker, seventy-three, thirty-three, Outer Lincoln. Just have a, just a couple of quick things. The last meeting actually was three to one, correct?
Yes. That was the first vote.
And then there was some kind of talk and we went to send it to you guys. So we had actually killed it last time. That's one thing. The lease on this property to Pat, is it for five years?
I don't have a lease there.
Okay. From what we were to understand, it was five years and the question being what happens and what restrictions happens after five years, you know, going to a different kind of business. Nobody's brought up the horses. I don't think they're right in the corner there. Like I said, it is a horse farm. There's goats. And horses and they go right up to the edge of the property.
Where, where is that, sir, in, in relationship to the?
Be very careful.
Yeah, you can come up and just don't trip. So here's the area to be rezoned. So where's the horses at?
This is my property.
Okay.
Where they're going to rezon is right in here. Horses are all in this area.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
And it extends all the way up to this. It's a big L that goes around my mother's family home. This obviously is to be the property.
Huh.
So.
Okay.
But right up next to each other, each one goes. And the only drainage for any of this is right here. And then there was a big drainage dish that comes through there, but this is like this. This little scuffle chute to take whatever water. And I guess the last thing I have is all of those auto shops are on the highway. They're accessed from the highway. You know, come up Lincoln into properties of the houses to get to an auto shop. There's no need for it to be there. There are plenty of places out on the highway. There's Larry's and Naps. Double D's, like they said, but they're all accessed from the highway. And what, again, if Pat has two bays and Naps has twelve and Larry's has twelve, what is it? What is he competing with being off the highway back there? You know, I don't understand why there's need for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Molly, I may, maybe I should just read the minutes from the last meeting. What were Maury's comments about the spot zone issue?
He disagreed that it was spot zone. He, he thought it fit. Since there's C four cat eight corner. And we did look at the comprehensive plan, which projects the area to be a neighborhood center, which does include low to medium, doesn't, low to medium density residential, but also community amenities and neighborhood commercial.
This all appears to be ill, right?
On our plan, yes.
Anything else?
It's his area.
Right.
I, I like, I, I think we need to send it back to APC and let them absorb this new information. I, I just like their recommendation. I, I make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three.
And that's going to be a month from, well, we meet once a month.
It'll be August twelfth. At six o'clock in this room. They will not have to renotice or readvertise. Same application. We'll go with the use and development commitment presented tonight.
So from what was presented tonight was our use and development commitment that we've came up with. As far as that one line item that was in there that was questioned for a gas station. It was, we read it a few different times and we just wanted to make sure that it. We, we weren't trying to put a gas station in, so that's something that can be taken out, but we didn't want to limit some of the other aspects of a, of a service station. If you're pulling in to get your car serviced with an oil change or whatever it may be. Is that a service station, you know, doing something? So we just wanted to make sure our verbiage was right. So again, if we, if we presented that to you tonight and we've got comments on it. Is that what gets brought forward to the next meeting or do we get a new version of this to area plan commission and then that gets presented? Because I guess I don't want it to be looked at as new information and new evidence. If we, if we bring something new next time and cross out a line item or, you know, add another restriction.
I think, you know, I, I, I think just speaking for myself, you know, the, the automobile service station, I'm thinking is like a Hucks or something, you know, running twenty-four hours a day there.
Sure.
You know, that's, that's probably when, you know, I would, you know, I would say that.
And we, we discussed that one too. I mean, there, some of them are somewhat vague.
Yeah. So, but according to your legal counsel, he seems that's vague. You know, that could be an opportunity where that could, that could fit in there. And so that's where, that's kind of where, you know, sure, you know, I got a problem.
Let's understand.
You know, so that's where.
And it can be revised.
Yeah.
And presented to APC at their meeting for consideration.
Scott, in, in my opinion, the, the more detailed you can get about what is your, what you're going to put there and what's possible to go in there and bring it for the APC, the better off you'll be.
Right. And that's what, that was our attempt at doing that. And I get, I get it. There's a couple of them that are vague, but we didn't want to limit ourselves from the auto repair. So.
Commissioners, you just want to make sure that gas station is not in there, right? Is that what I'm gathering?
Well, read that again, Heather.
I, I just don't think.
Hold on a second, Dan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Definition of service station says a gas station, typically one having the facilities to provide automotive repairs and maintenance.
So.
The definition of service station is.
But these, these new service stations could be, they don't do auto repair there. They sell milk and, and all that other stuff.
That typically falls under the convenience store.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we can come up with some better verbiage there though.
I think so.
Okay.
And then that's what we'll present.
And there were a couple of other comments made with the signage and so forth. I think we can add something else in there for non-illuminated, whatever it may be, to, to hopefully take care of that. The only other comment, and I know you guys have already made a motion, but the only other comment was flooding. And again, that's something that once it's presented for site review, drainage calculations would be done and everything would be sized properly for whatever's being placed on that property. So it's not affecting somebody, a neighboring property, more so than it is today.
I would, I'd be concerned about, you know, chemical runoff into the pasture.
Everything drains to the southeast corner of the property. So nothing's going to drain to the west. Actually, there's probably going to have to be a wall or some sort of a feature to, to take care of that hillside where it starts coming down into the property. So everything does drain to the southeast corner and then there would be some sort of a basin, outfall pipe and everything down there that would take care of it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Okay, next item is for discussion.
Carly Kidwell, Purdue Extension, Warwick County. And how are you guys?
Good.
We did this quarterly report and grouped it by the program areas that we have here in Warwick County, which would be four H youth development, which is myself. Ag and natural resources, which is Amanda Mosman, and health and human sciences, which would be Joe Gillreath. And then we also have access and our county has used community development resources before. So just a couple of highlights to pull out. We just finished our four H camp, which is one of the largest in the state. And Amanda with soil and water and the parks department is working on conservation crusaders, which is a conservation program. They move around the county. They do it in three of the different towns and it's for school age children. And then Joe, her, one thing I would highlight on hers is that parenting forever class is a judge mandated course for parents who are divorcing and have children under the age of eighteen. So our judge is mandated as well as the Vanderburg County judge that handles divorces. So we flip back and forth with who hosts it, but she teaches that quite a bit because we have Warwick County citizens in it. And then our office is heavily involved with the fair. So right now that's where we're kind of living since the four H fairs next week.
What's the, is, is this just a typo recorded self-care at this program for eighty-eight Casiosco County?
Let's see. Oh, and that probably means that Casiosco County educator designed it and she delivered it here.
Okay.
Is, yeah, that's how I would interpret it. Any other questions? That's a good question.
Oh, I like this though. This, this tells us a little bit more about what you guys do.
Yeah, it's good.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks.
Okay, next order of business is the action agenda. Approval of minutes from the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four regular session.
Motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our motion carries three zero and from the June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four emergency session.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our motion carries three zero. Our business is the county administrator.
Okay, tonight I have the short consent agenda, the certified claims voucher, report date, July third, twenty twenty-four. A surplus declaration of six Nortel network phones from the economic development department. And the approval of the concrete steps for the animal control saving seven building.
Can, can we just declare those phones worthless?
They are worthless.
Yes, as declaring those surplus, the, the value, they could be.
They're not worth a dime.
Yeah, it could be disposed of.
Did you sell them?
I wouldn't waste my time. So what are we, what are you saying? We'll just go ahead and leave it as is?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our motion carries three zero.
The other item I have is the environmental, environmental management consultant's service agreement for the methane mitigation. Where they're, the, the plan is to rework that trench at solid waste management.
Is that the twenty-four thousand we discussed in the budget is what that is?
Uh, this is part of it, yeah. This is actually something that we need an additional appropriation for. This project is eleven thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-one cents.
Say it one more time.
Eleven thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars, sixty-one cents.
I, I just, once again, I would check the contract. I believe that we're, we are responsible for this, but it's something that we should probably. Anytime we do any type of work out there, I think that we should at least let renewable resources know about it.
Okay.
So counsel, the, the question that came up today is, is this our responsibility or the leasers' responsibility now?
I think it's going to end up being the counties.
I think it's ours, but that land is all leased to them. So they should at least be aware of it.
They should and, and we should make sure that, I, I think the contract and the lease provides. I remember I provided some permission to go on and deal with these sorts of things onto that property, but we would want to notify them.
Yeah, and this, this specific trench is right there along the blacktop directly across from the building.
Do we want to, do we want to approve this based on notification and?
That would be preferred because they have an expectation for this to be implemented by July thirteenth item. Once it's implemented by July thirteenth.
Go ahead and get that approved.
That, that good?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve based on notification of leaseholder in the.
Verification of responsibility?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our motion carries three zero.
That's all I have.
Quick question, Heather. Have we got the animal controls?
The steps?
Steps. Have we got them moved in place yet?
They've been delivered. They were, they were supposed to be put in place today, but I don't know that that got accomplished.
Probably not, since there's only one of them.
Yeah.
That's all?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Next order of business. Didn't even have to call him up. He's ready.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dwayne Beatles, county veteran service officer. In the past, the board here in front of me has passed $100 to pay for our veterans' headstones that are issued by the government or requested by the family members. I have no record in my office how long ago that was, nor talking with your administrator, how long ago that amount was put in, set in stone. But since then, I can tell you that the prices have increased quite a bit. So I came to, coming to the board to ask for an increase. I can go over all the prices with you if you would like, such as on the second page, you see the medallions, and then on the front page, you see the bronze niche, which is a small bronze on the front there. To place that on a private headstone is $100 nowadays to put those little ones on there. The big bronze on the top right-hand corner, front page, to put that on a private headstone on the back, that is $150 nowadays. To put that plus all the upright and the flat marble or granite headstones into the ground, that involves digging and concrete work, that's $225 now to do that. How that came to my attention is a monument placed tried to offset the cost to the widow or the family member, which in my mind is not possible. All right, these are our veterans that sign the ultimate check, and I believe that we should take care of those headstones or placards. So I'm requesting that the max amount that could be charged, the place would be $225 instead of $100. And they would charge us accordingly to which one of the ones they are placing on the headstone around the building.
Great sight.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. Thank you, sir. You have a great night.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Building Commissioner, you're next.
Dennis Lockhart, Warwick County Building Inspector. I'm coming to you guys. I'm begging for another truck again. Now, the one we have have a, it's got 80,000 and I have 100,000 by the end of the year. So I've been looking around and found what I think is a pretty good deal on a pickup truck. What I need approved, depends on which way I go, is either 40,905 to buy it outright or 22,905 to trade the vehicle I got in. I didn't know which way you guys wanted me to go with it. Cause I know we pass vehicles down occasionally.
Dennis, is this a four-wheel drive?
Yes.
The, the new truck?
Yes.
If it were me, I, I don't know of any need for Dennis's truck. I don't think Dennis needs that truck. I'd go ahead and trade it in for the.
I would rather trade it in, to be honest with you, to keep more money in the building fund.
It's not, it's not better than what Jeff's driving now?
No.
No.
I don't think so.
Maybe we could trade Jeff's truck in.
That's what we're doing.
Oh, 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 is that, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Huh? Okay. So that's what we're, that's what you're doing. Okay.
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
Trade or not.
Trade?
Trade, yeah. No, I don't, I mean, I don't think, I mean, maintenance has got, they got good vehicles right now. Highway and stuff, so.
Bobby, can you fit into a Chevy Colorado?
We can make that happen later.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
The trade-in?
The trade-in.
Trade-in.
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
First and second, all in favor.
Thank you.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you, Dennis. Okay.
Just, just a note, Chair, just for the record, that that, this, this is not purchased with property tax dollars. This is purchased with permit fee, permit fees and stuff, so.
It's not out of.
It's not out of general funds. Just want to put that on the record.
Good call. Next order of business is acquisitions administrator.
Oh, no.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, the first order of business we have is EMA has recently acquired a new mobile command unit through ARPA funds, and it is replacing their 2003 trailer. As a result, we are requesting that the Board of Commissioners to declare the 2003 eight-by-36 triaxal cargo trailer as surplus. I have pictures attached to your information sheet there. This trailer was originally purchased in December 2003 for a total of $37,640 with a federal grant from Homeland Security. Matt and I have had a conversation with the Department of Homeland Security, and they do strongly recommend that the proceeds from the sale be reinvested into the EMA office. Matt, he wants to explain to you what he would like to do with those proceeds.
Matt Gable, EMA Director. With this, when I was looking at it, we would invest the money that we get back into the mobile command that we have now in case like for maintenance or upgrades or anything that we have. Looking through my equipment that I have for the county, we have an older disaster response trailer that's 20-plus years old. What I would do with that, when I get approval from my EMA board to see if we can surplus that and get a new one, I would take the proceeds from what we get from this trailer and from the other disaster response trailer, if they approve it, and put it towards a brand-new disaster response trailer for the county and use the funds to upgrade it with, putting supplies in there and also outfit in it. I've talked with many people from the board and they are okay doing that. They said upgrading was good. We have to get it approved by our EMA board. Once we do that, I would talk with the fire department and they would help me set it up the way that it should be, so it'll be useful for the county. And then at that point, we would be pretty well off for EMA with new equipment.
Under IC 522224.5, to sell the existing trailer, if the Commissioners would declare it surplus, we have to go to an auction site linked in with Gateway. And so we would like to do that through GovDeals, which meets all of the requirements. Once the surplus declaration is approved, we plan to list the trailer on GovDeals, which is a reputable online auction site, and we'd like to set the opening bid at $7,000, noting that anything over $5,000, GovDeals does quite a bit of advertising free of charge to us, which will increase our chances for a successful sale.
Chair, what do you think? What do you anticipate this thing going for?
If you look at it, I mean, there's a lot of, it would be a great onsite office for a construction company.
Just don't put this picture. It looks like Matt Storm bodies.
Yeah. You know, I, I think it's going to bring a minimum of 7,000.
It's not going to be my body. It's too slender.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm, I'm thinking a minimum of 7,000. I don't know. I'm, I'm thinking maybe 10.
That takes a heck of a vehicle to haul digging.
Yeah, I think you'd get more than that out of it.
You can convert that as a camper. I'm camping.
I could move that down to Kentucky and live next to you.
It, it seriously could be a camper because it already has restrooms in it and, and a kitchen. Be great for a river camp.
Might bid on it.
I'll make a motion to clarify surplus.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Uh, the next order of business is approval of some aluminum door covers for our crawl space on all four exterior of this old courthouse. Currently, they have, some have styrofoam and some have wood. And sometimes that moisture contents on the side that goes to the crawl space could create, could create some mold. So I have talked to three contractors. I've talked to Aaron Engler with Engler Enterprises. He's done quite a bit of workforce here at the courthouse and across the street. And I know he's covered up. He simply has not, I'm assuming, had time to get me a bid. I have talked with Scott Smith with Praxis Construction, and he's overwhelmed with all the work that he has on storm damage that he couldn't get to us before the first of the year. So I did reach out to Earl Parker, got a price for Earl doing some custom steel doors with a rubber seal around it. His price came in at $3,575. He also gave us an option of aluminum door covers, again, with the seal around it, and that came in at $4,475. He would have handles on it, so it would be easy to remove once you take the screws out. And the aluminum, of course, as you all know, would be lighter weight. So I'm coming to you today to, to get approval for whichever way, if you guys decide to go with Earl Parker.
Chair, what was the steel door amount? 3,000?
3,575.
Can you say the doors would be removable?
Yes, they would be removable. Basically, this is what, this is Earl's sketch. Ever which one you decide to go with, the steel or the aluminum would have handles welded to them to make it easier.
Did he talk about what kind of seal he's going to use to seal that? Did he?
He just told me it was a rubber seal.
Rubber seal.
Mm-hmm.
I think that, that would be important because to keep the, you know, any air and.
Mm-hmm. And then we don't have to worry about moisture rotting the steel like it would a wooden door.
I like the aluminum.
I like the aluminum, yeah.
Especially if you're the one that's got lift-off.
Well, it's, yeah, a, a steel door would be probably significant in weight. I mean to.
Yeah, it would be, uh, weight-wise, he did give me the weights, almost double, was it, I think? I have to go through my notes to find that, but it was, it was quite a bit more weight on the steel. The weight of the aluminum, they're 70 pounds each, and the weight of the steel is 150 pounds each.
The back of the door will lift off.
Yeah.
Let's go, let's go with steel. No, I, I, when Sherry sent this, I said that the aluminum's the way to go.
I agree. Motion to approve the aluminum doors?
I'll second.
All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
And then one other item I'd like to bring up for Parkers. They are a small company and part of what they need, they would need, once they have the materials on site, they would request $2,237.50 for materials, which, that, that does fall under, I believe, Senate Bill 317, which allows.
Well, once they're on site, it's not advanced payments.
Okay.
So as soon as it's on site, it can be paid.
Okay, so I just, I just want to make sure that we can put that in there and can agree to those terms because they are a smaller company and, and they'll need that once it gets here.
That's, that's just their terms, and if we agree to them, we agree to them.
Okay, all right. Thank you. My next order of business is the IT room at the Judicial Center. On Monday, the 24th, we encountered an emergency situation when the air conditioner unit in the Judicial Center stopped working. We contacted BNG to address the issue. The county's IT equipment was at risk without the, some type of AC in there, and there was a real potential for disruption in our county operations. The Commissioners agreed that it was crucial to proceed with an order of a new unit be installed. Currently, we are using the EMA emergency portable AC unit to maintain lower temperatures in the IT room until a new unit arrives. BNG currently provides service to our heating and air needs in the Judicial Center. Today, I'm coming before you to vote to approve the contract for BNG in the amount of $8,180. We had originally talked at one point about a split unit. BNG recommended not to go that way because part of the unit has to be placed on the ground. A lot of piping has to go up the west side of the building and then back through the front, and it, would it make a great deal of sense to do that? And they felt like what they had bid here was a 3103700 BTU would be our best option. Meanwhile, we are waiting for a part for the unit that has broke. We had bought that, not by a current provider. They're going to, they're going to provide us the part, but not the labor to fix it. And I think that's probably the best that we're going to be able to do. And they are working with BNG on that part. It was supposed to be here Monday, and you're probably not going to believe it, but it's not here. So they continue to work with that company. And when that does come in. This is a totally different company. Yeah. When that does come in, they will repair it, and then we would have a backup unit in the future for the IT room.
Tracking number?
I'm sorry?
Have they even given you a tracking number?
Tyler is working, he, he went to a totally different distributor because the distributor that we purchased from, we couldn't, we couldn't get to square one, basically. So that's where we're at on that. So today I would like to get vote to move forward with the contract for $8,180 for BNG. And I think, I think I gave you the original on that too, Heather.
Okay.
Oh, no, they're sitting right here. I never asked anything out.
Chair, what kind of warranty comes with the new unit?
That, I don't know. I don't, I, I stand corrected. Equipment, one-year warranty. BNG provides one-year warranty on materials provided and workmanship. That's it. And there's a copy on your back page of the actual proposal from BNG from Greg Melonier. I did check that same unit online and then factored in the installation of it. We were $105 within their price, which I believe we could throw that towards shipping, but I, I don't think we could ship that unit for $105. So BNG is well within, if, if we bought it off of the internet.
This seems like a very short warranty. Warrant period.
Brand is that?
Chair, so it says 24 feet of ceiling exhaust duct. Why, why is that 24 feet? Or is that supposed to be 24 inches? 24-inch ceiling exhaust duct.
That was the recommended accessories when I went online. That's how they sold it.
24 feet?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that was just the, that, that's not BNG's price. That's when I went online, if, as if I was going to purchase it online. Those are the accessories that I would have to purchase, and they only had offered it in a 24-foot. So I'm, I'm assuming you're buying a lot more than what you really do need.
So this is a portable air conditioning unit?
It's, it's like what we have in there now, Bob.
Yeah, I understand.
Just a different brand. Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Here's my question. Generally speaking, this thing should be plug and play because we've already got one sitting over there, you know? I'm just gonna assume the hoses are the same size. Plug it in, plug it in. He's, he's got condensate drain, change breaker, receptacle, none of that's gonna need to be.
If we keep the other one hooked up as a backup unit, what they recommended was setting the new one at a lower temperature. Once the old one gets repaired, set it at a higher temperature. So if this, for whatever reason, is not keeping up with the heat in there, the other one automatically kicks on.
Is there a rim in there for two of them?
If we take the table out of there.
Yeah.
Desk in there.
Yeah, Guy said that he could remove the desk.
Once the other failed got fixed, I'd use that as your permanent one, and I'd use this one as your backup.
Okay, that makes sense.
What do you think, Dano?
Heather, well, if I ask you or, or maybe Sherri, but, you know, so we're looking, what, around $8,000 bucks or $8,200? And you, did you tell me there was money in the budget for this and the...
I think Heather, because I, Heather and I had this conversation, and she said the cumulative capital development has $18,888.63, and I believe that was your recommendation, Heather, if I'm not mistaken?
County-owned buildings HVAC line.
There's nothing in the hopper that's, I mean, of course, this is very important.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think we have to do it.
Makes sense. We'll ruin a lot of equipment if we don't.
Move all the equipment to a cooler area of the building.
Put it in the morgue.
What do we need here?
We just need approval.
Make a motion to approve the 8180.
Second.
And all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Sheriff.
The final thing I have is discussion of service contract for county generators. We have never awarded the county generator service contract. And so we really need to have some generators serviced. And I just want to make sure it's okay with you. I've reached out to Kyle Clark and to Everpar, and I've asked him to give me prices. I've given him the generators, the mono IDs, so on and so forth, of putting new filters, oil, and labor for all of those. And I'll be coming to you all with a total. I do have Kyle's figures. I don't want to give those until I have the other figures to come to you all about just doing an updated maintenance on all of those generators.
That's all in Sheriff's Department, J.C.
Yes, it does not include Bobby's new generator because he's, that doesn't need it, and he's got his own contract for that from the company that was purchased from.
What about disaster building?
It's, it's the county's Yale Judicial Center, the Historic Courthouse, Disaster Storage, Chandler EMS, Alcoa, and the one over at the Boonville Water Tower. Yeah.
So is this, is this just a service call? Or is this a contract for the...
No, it's, it's a service call. Because we have never awarded a contract, but yet, we still want to make sure that we're servicing those and keeping those where they need to be. Therefore, I'm asking for filters, change of oil, blow them out, and this wouldn't include any new parts if he goes in there and finds something that's wrong.
Why wouldn't we put this under contract?
Well, we've tried.
We've tried, but there's been issues with one of the companies. You know, we've had some negative feedback from one of the companies, and...
And then, and then we tried to get it with one, and...
He backed out.
And he backed out.
So, so she's just trying to get, get it serviced, and then we'll go...
I thought we went through this last six months.
Yeah, we did, but there, there were some questionable service records with one of the companies, and so we've never followed up on it.
Okay. Is that something I should put out for bid again?
Oh, boy, I thought we were done.
I'll do whatever you all instruct me to do. I just think...
Are there other companies?
There, there's basically two.
Yeah, there's not, there's not a bunch.
What I'd like to, to say about the generators, ever since I've been with EMA, we've called, we were with Everpar, we had some issues with them, and we've been using Kyle ever since. The reason why I like using Kyle is, A, all the other fire departments use him as well. He's very fast in response time. If I ever need anything, he's, he comes out the same day. He's the one that's been doing all of our repeater generators as well. So that's why I use him. And I just got a quote for him looking at all of EMA generators as well, because I know when he does it, he does it right, and he doesn't, he does it the correct way by the amounts, and like, he breaks it down.
Didn't we get a quote from him before?
Yeah, he's the one that opted to back out.
He backed out.
Well, it's, I think, we'd never, when we set that on the table, it was tabled, and then we never got back to it, and that's why I think...
We did, we passed it.
We, no, we never passed it.
No, it, it fell off the table.
It, it, yeah, it kind of fell off the table, but...
Okay, so...
But I will say...
We need to get it back on, you know, back on.
So I can put it back out for bids if you want. I will say, though, when Kyle did, we had a problem with the one over by the water tower. Am I speaking correctly? And when Kyle went in to service it, they're supposed to write on the back of the filters the day it was put in, and that's how they kind of do it. None of that was recorded under the people we had it with prior.
Yeah, and that's what the issue was with the last director, is we never, we never knew if they were out there or what they did. And Kyle actually writes down everything and gives us detailed stuff, is what he does.
That's fair.
And plus, I like to keep it in Warwick County.
I'm not a big fan of the other guy.
Well, we talked to them because they were, they was out doing some startup stuff at the new building. Oh, highway. Yeah, the highway, but, and they, they talked about they had issues. You know, they, they acknowledged that they had some issues there, and they assured us that they, you know, they were working on it, so.
I've got them working on my air compressor. And the board did sign that contract then that I had sent you?
I'll have to look and see.
Okay, so let's, let's get this service call taken care of, and then we'll have a discussion about what we're gonna do with the bigger picture contract.
Okay, so I am waiting for a prices from Everpar for the identical same service, which I really look to have those this week.
This, this is service, right?
This is just service, it's not the contract, because that really does need to be addressed. And then I'll come back to you all with that.
Services, services are acquired, whatever, are, we have a policy that we passed for acquiring services.
Services.
We have to follow our policy.
Yes, so services, we really don't have to bid those out by Indiana statute.
If this is just a service call.
Unless we set a policy to do so, and I don't, I can't remember. Do you remember, Sherri, what the county policy is on ser, services?
Well, we, we did that new policy on services that have to do with public works in regards to maintenance of existing buildings and things of that nature. We're using that, as long as it's under $150,000.
And so what, remind, refresh me what, what that policy was that we...
That we don't have to, we don't have to put it out for bids if it's services.
Contact somebody and have them come in.
Mm-hmm, for a public works project that is maintaining your existing structure or public work, we don't have to put it out, as long as it's under $150,000.
So you're just waiting on additional figures just for comparative purposes?
For services, and then if you do want me to put it out for bids, the entire contract, I'm happy to do that. But there, again, we had a lot of questions with a particular company in the service we were receiving.
Accept the price that we have, get that service called.
You can.
And my next question is, we've already got prices for a service contract. We, we, I don't know why it's not on the agenda. We've essentially tabled it, I don't know if it was officially tabled.
You'd have to go back and make sure they're so good.
See what's going on there. I don't, I don't necessarily think we need to put it all the way back out to rebid if, if we've already got numbers.
You wouldn't have to rebid it.
Just get it done.
Do you have the figures for current repair?
Yes.
Current repair would be $5,250 for maintenance of the one, two, three, four, seven facilities. Generators. This would not include parts, of course, but filters, oil, and labor, $5,250.64 from Kyle Clark Dayville Services.
Seems not.
Seems like.
If it doesn't include parts.
No, I think...
But does it include the oils and filters?
Yeah, the labor is what I think is high.
You're paying $390 a machine.
Yes, that's, that's where the money comes in on the labor.
It's just parts that might be broken.
Right, right, that's just to change the oil, do new filters, and, and blow those lines out.
You're good.
I'm sure this is Kyle's number.
This is Kyle's number.
Is that 35? Is that 35 kilowatt?
I don't fit a kilowatt.
It's odd.
And it's odd.
Well, filters. Small, that's come out of your paint. I don't know. Special filter?
Yeah.
I say you just go with it, get it done.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So, on the contract, we're gonna have to just go back and review and figure that out here later, right?
See if the prices are still good, and if not, resubmit. How much was that?
Sherri, we're gonna assume that was all from you since you sat down. I said, Sherri, we're gonna assume that was all from you since you sat down.
That's it. She said she was finished.
Okay, Bobby, here, here I am, sir.
Thank you. The first item I have is, if you recall, that you did approve the low bid for Bridge 148 was Regal, and this is just the contract that goes with that bidding paperwork. I believe that I submitted it to Andrew for review. I don't know if you've had a chance to review it yet.
I did look at it, incorporates all of the bidding documents, so everything should be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you. The other item I have is the release of the retainage for the roundabout at Anderson and Van Broe. This is for the amount of $157,872.81. And they have performed all the work, and I would recommend releasing the retainage.
Make a motion to release the retainage.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a couple items on my agenda for tonight. The first item on the agenda is the 2024 Covered Bridge Certification Request. This is from the State Comptroller of Indiana, just asked for the Commissioners to certify how many covered bridges exist in Warwick County for IC 8-14-1-10. And Bobby, that is zero, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we would just need approval.
It does not count as a covered bridge, and we don't maintain the covering of it.
Doesn't count, though, huh?
It's not a, it is, the covered bridge is not performing the function of protecting the bridge per the Indiana Code, I believe.
It's cosmetic only?
Yeah.
So we still have zero, huh?
We just need approval to complete this form and send it in to Comptroller.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to complete the bridge certification, covered bridge.
All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, it's consideration of limited attorney represent, representation for the Health Department. That would be the Health Board as well, actually. This is with, in regards to a lawsuit that was filed by a previous attorney for the Health Department Health Board who withdrew at the Health Board's request, instruction. And nevertheless, they still remain as a plaintiff in that lawsuit. And so this is, the Health Board is approved entering into an attorney contractual relationship with Attorney Tim Bourne for the purposes of getting that lawsuit dismissed. And so this would be, and of course, the Health Board has to come to Commissioners for approval of attorney, and so this is them coming to you, asking for permission for representation for the purposes of that lawsuit only.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Next item on the agenda is Amendment of Chapter 54, Construction Site, Post-Construction Site Stormwater Control Ordinance.
It'd actually be 2024-9, since we didn't do the first one.
So 2024-9, this is a document that was required by the state, actually, to have in place. It was drafted by Stormwater Department with Moradall, and these are all recommendations that came from them. And all we're doing is approving their recommendations to amend that, Chapter 54 of the Warwick County Code of Ordinances.
Motion to approve ordinance 2024-9.
Second.
I really wanted Steve Sherwood to come give us a speech.
No, we're good.
All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
He didn't even stick around, did he?
No.
I have one other item that's not on the agenda. If, if you don't mind, there is somewhere put a ACH Withdrawal Agreement with Lynnville National Bank, LNB Community Bank. This is for the Auditor's Office in terms of payment entries and tightening up this agreement that actually LNB's been doing, but this agreement was something that was missed, that was never actually approved. So this would be actually updating the agreement that they had in place previously with their current language, changing definitions and different things.
This is for their payroll account, for the payroll transfers.
So we can, ACH payroll for employees.
So in order?
Everything's in order, yes. We, we recommended some changes, and I agreed to those changes, and so everything's in order now.
Make a motion to approve the ACH Withdrawal Agreement with Lynnville National Bank for the Auditor's Office.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. At all, counsel?
I do not. The only other item I had would be if Commissioners are wanting to ask for the sheriff's assistance in acquiring some county property, recovering some county property that Mr. Mayberry was hired to do, in case he encounters some difficulties obtaining that. I did speak with the sheriff initially beforehand. There is a statute here that allows the Commissioners to acquire, go recover county property and issue orders to get that county property, and the sheriff could assist Mr. Mayberry in the case that the individual who has county-owned property doesn't have, if they don't have the authority to have it, would have, get, collect that property from them.
Hopefully, we don't get to that point.
Hopefully not.
Do you need, does that need a motion or anything?
I, I think just a, a motion, requesting the sheriff to assist Mr. Mayberry if needed.
I make that motion.
All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
I know the sheriff wasn't on the agenda, do you, does he not have anything?
Sheriff, you have anything? Sheriff, you have anything?
Okay.
He's got a meeting he's late for.
That's all, counsel.
That's all, thank you.
I, I have some, I want to make a public statement. Uh, there's been some confusion or misrepresentation in the media about legal services and personal legal services that have been, uh, monies, uh, being appropriated from the county. Uh, I, 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 as a Commissioner, have never made a request, never will, never made a request for legal services to be paid by the county in my personal legal services. I've written a check for that on my own account. I just want to put that on the record because the news media, uh, can't seem to get that straight.
I as well.
And I concur. I don't know where that story came from, but it is inaccurate.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.